Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 6, 2019 City of Kingston Planning Board Special Meeting. We will begin the meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will begin with introductions. My name is Wayne Platt Jr. I'm the chairman. We also have members Robert Jacobson, Mary Jo Wiltshire, Matt Gillis, Jamie Mills, and Kevin Roach. Suzanne Cahill is here. She's our planning director. We also have Kyla Dede, who is the Assistant Planner. Danielle Gartenstein is the Assistant Corporation Counsel. Some housekeeping issues. We have exits at both sides of the council chambers. In case of emergency, we're going to use the stairway and not use the elevator. Bathrooms are to my left. We ask folks to please silence their cellphones at this time, and if there's a conversation that needs to take place, we're going to use the conference room to my left. And we ask that folks respect the speakers. In regular business, item number one is open public speaking. Fifteen minutes is allotted for this, and we ask folks to limit their comments to two minutes. Open public speaking is for any planning-related topic, and as a note, the Kingstonian is not listed as a public hearing at tonight's meeting. So if there's anybody who would like to speak at this time, step up to the microphone and identify yourself. Hi there.
Hi. I'm reading from my phone because I left my notes at home.
Okay, just bring that microphone up a little bit closer to you.
Hi. Is that better?
No, Joe? Like, right here. That's how close you get.
Oh, okay. Hi, I'm Sarah Wank. I live at 150 Main Street in Kingston. I believe the board is in receipt of a letter from kingstoncitizens.org, and I wanted to speak in support of that letter and just bring up a couple of points from it. The environmental assessment form for this project was prepared nearly a year ago, and since then, the applicant has changed the project considerably. In fact, just since the last time they were here, and even since the last zoning board of appeals meeting that they appeared at. The addition of affordable housing is commendable, but the project has changed substantially and has grown in scope and scale, and the impacts are not accurately calculated in the EAF at this point. The planning board should require that the applicant amend the EAF to reflect the project in its current form. The original EAF states that the project will include 129 residential units, and the latest announcement by the city raised that to 143 units. This will increase water and energy use, traffic, waste output, as well as reduce the parking available to the public. All of these figures must be revised to reflect the impacts of the current project proposal. The old EAF states that the largest building in the project will be 48 feet tall. The most recent changes would add an additional story to the building, bringing the total to around 70 feet. This will increase the adverse impacts on Kingston's historic district, its history, its architecture, and as an economic driver. And the state Historic Preservation Office has already articulated strong concerns about these issues. So to conclude, the planning board as lead agency must determine the significance of this proposed action based on a full and properly completed and revised EAF. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to close the open public speaking. Moving into old business, number two. Actually, we're going to combine these two. Sue, does that sound good? We got...
Yeah.
Lot line deletion. Okay. We can just go... Yeah. We're going to combine item number two and three. It's for the same property, 9-17 and 21 North Front Street and 51 Schwenck Drive and a portion of Fair Street Extension. There's a lot line deletion of the lands of Herzog Supply Company and the City of Kingston. And we also have a site plans/special permit to construct a mixed-use building with a 400-car garage... Excuse me, 420-car garage, 129 apartments, 32 hotel rooms, and 8,000 square feet of retail space. Section block and lot is 48.80-1, -25, 26, and 24.120. Seeker determination zone C2, mixed-use overlay district. Kingstonian Development LLC is the applicant. Herzog Supply Company Incorporated and City of Kingston are the owners. We'll ask that the applicants come up to the table at this time. I can grab another chair if you want to, if you... Joe, if you want to introduce your team here.
Sure. Joe Bonora, you'll remember me. I think everyone knows Mike and Dennis, and this is Frank. Frank is here as our traffic consultant, who's going... He's from Creighton-Manning, and he's going to be speaking to any concerns about the traffic, including the new changes that we have proposed. So if it's okay, real briefly, I'm just going to go over those changes, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so go ahead. There have been changes to the project, so if you want to have the floor, yes.
Sure. So we recently submitted the proposed changes that we have come up with. We're excited to be able to offer the ability to have affordable housing in this project. We've been trying to be able to find a way to do that from the beginning, but we're happy that we found a compromise, we think, that meets the goals and does so in a way that's still sensitive to the project. So Brad is, as we speak, running up new boards, which we thought were here already. These are the boards. There they are. They were at the press conference that we had with the mayor, but the... So we'll show you the visual impact of it, but really, we want to, you know, so Frank can get out of here. We'll talk about the traffic first. But basically, what we did in adding 14 units, we added a story to the building in one section. And in reality, that section has only seven units in it, and so the question is, where's the other seven units? What we did was we converted some of the units that were in the building and changed their size. So basically vertically, there's a stack of studio apartments that didn't exist before, where there were one- and two-bedroom apartments previously. And then on the Schwenck Drive side, and I could point at it... Hang on. This moves, right? Yeah, I can do it. Okay. I didn't bring my laser pointer today. But basically, this section right here is the only piece that went taller, and we felt like this was the most appropriate place to do it. It's actually outside of the boundaries of the historic district. It'll only be seen on Schwenck Drive. It's set back from Schwenck Drive. There's a 30-foot setback here where this roof is. And from North Front Street, Fair Street, Wall Street, you will never see this. The way the angle works, if you're at grade, you can't possibly see this. There's just no visual vantage point where this would be visible. So this was the most appropriate place to be able to add this density that's needed to get the affordable housing into the project. In terms of its impact, I know Dennis has prepared some information regarding the water and sewer and other utilities, but as we... Oh, go ahead. There was questions.
So just to be clear, across the top, you end up with seven new units, and those units are studios?
No, these seven units are a mix of one- and two-bedrooms.
Okay.
The studio apartments are in this building, and so the affordable units are actually mixed throughout the whole project. There are two units on each floor here, so one, two, three, four stories. And then there's another affordable unit right here, and the reason that ninth... I say affordable. There's a ninth studio here. The reason that happened is one of the comments that we received was to make this end of this building look like it had a setback and have a different material. In order to do that, we had to lop off a piece of the top, so it naturally fit that the studio would go right there. So there's one studio with a view this way, and there's a stack of eight studios, two on each level for four levels in this building. And then in here, there'll be five other one-bedrooms that are just like every other one-bedroom, that are going to be selected to be sporadically placed throughout the building. But as far as the construction goes, this is all ones, twos, and the threes that were planned before.
And you accomplished adding the other apartments by, what, reducing the size?
Correct. By taking a one- and a two-bedroom unit and just rearranging the insides of them, and then getting them still to stack vertically. So basically, you take a two-bedroom and make it two studios. And so you create two units out of the space that was one unit before, even though you have less bedrooms. So the total impact on the project isn't as much as what it seems with 14 new units because you lose some bedrooms in the process of converting over here.
So overall, the project, you reduced the number of two-bedrooms?
We reduced... We rearranged the numbers completely, so the...
What do we have now, then, in the project?
Well, that's a great question. I have to boot up my computer. There was... Do you have it, Dennis, handy? What I sent you?
As far as the breakdown between one, two, three, and studios? No.
Well, maybe when Frank's talking about the traffic, I'll pull it up. I have it. I just don't... I don't want to misquote it and get it wrong.
No, that's fine.
There's roughly... I know there's nine studios. It's roughly half and half between ones and twos, and there's 10 three-bedrooms. But I don't... It's 60-some each ones and twos, but I don't remember exactly, and I will...
Pretty...
Yep, pretty even. And that's pretty much what the market would call for, is to have about 8% three-bedrooms, even split between ones and twos, and a percentage of studios. Okay, without further ado, I'd love to give the mic to Frank and let him talk about the whole... He was going to come anyway to talk about the revised items that the city's third-party traffic consultant wanted us to study, so he's going to talk about that, as well as what impact, if any, this change had on traffic.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Just again, for the record, if there is one. Frank Filichito from Creighton-Manning Engineering. My firm did the original traffic impact study that was... Sure, sorry. Is that better? Did the original traffic impact study that was submitted to the city's planning board engineering review. That was HVEA. They performed a review in early October, and we've since provided some comments in response to that. So I'll address those, and then I'll get into what the change in the number of units does to the traffic. Starting with the HVEA letter, they generally concurred with the majority of our findings in terms of traffic impacts and mitigation. They had two comments that required us to do some additional work, and we've since submitted that on October 24th. One of the comments had to do with the idea of changing the flashing red light at North Front and Wall from a all-way flashing red to a full, fully functioning traffic signal. And we did that analysis, and we found that there'd be some benefit, but probably not the amount of benefit that it would take to actually build and construct that in terms of dollars and cents. So we felt comfortably with the existing operation as is. We also looked at it under the scenario of the DRI, where the direction of Wall Street would be reversed to one-way southbound. And we found that under that scenario, it would be very little value to putting a fully functioning traffic signal at that intersection because the project's entrance there is an entrance-only, so you'd have traffic moving away from North Front and traffic moving away from North Front on Wall. Very little reason to install a traffic signal under those types of scenarios. So we addressed that comment in that way. They also had some comments regarding site distance on Schwenck Drive at the secondary access point to the garage. We've addressed that as well. With regard to the increase in traffic associated with the 14 additional affordable units, what we did is we did a very simple trip generation analysis that had been done previously. What we concluded was that it would result in an additional five trips during the PM peak hour, and that equated to about 2.5% increase beyond what we had originally studied. And when you think about five trips kind of distributed throughout the roadway network, it's one or two trips, worst case, at an intersection. We felt that that was imperceptible to most drivers.
And what period of time is that? Five trips?
It's like the weekday evening rush hour.
Okay. As far as the site distance that you talked about here, identified, what can be done to mitigate any problems with that? Do you have... Is there anything that you propose that would... could be done to alleviate that?
Yes, there's... If you're familiar with Schwenck Drive, as you look, if you're facing north towards Kingston Plaza, looking to the right, there's some, obviously, some verticality there and some landscaping in the way. We recommended that it be cleared to the extent it can be, and make sure that no new landscaping that is proposed as part of this project be within 15 feet of the road to keep that sightline open. But we do have the appropriate amount of stopping sight distance, which is really the critical amount. We have that, so it's safe from that standpoint.
Questions for Frank?
Okay. One of the other items that's affected by the additional units would be water and sewer. In July, we had written a report and estimated that the design flow for the project, as it was envisioned at the time, was 28,320 gallons per day. And we ran that through both your water system and your sewer system, running down Schwenck Drive to Frog Alley Pump Station and the treatment plant, and reviewed this with the city engineer and the water superintendent, and there was no... There were no concerns about capacity with respect to water or sewer. That analysis was very conservative because we use the DEC hydraulic loading rate numbers, which tend to be at least double what you see here as far as per bedroom, per hotel room, per seat of restaurant. We even add the swimming pool backwash into it. So the additional 14-unit bedrooms adds 5% to that flow rate, and we issued an addendum and sent it to the lead agency on October 24th, which indicated that there would be a 5% increase in design flow from 28,320 gallons per day to 29,860 gallons a day. So the changes... The original design flow was about 1.5% of the city's water system excess capacity. That goes to 1.56%. And the original design flow was 2.85% of the city's sewer system excess capacity, and that goes to 3%. Changes the pump runtimes at the Frog Alley Pump Station from 57.5 minutes to 59.7 minutes. And the one thing we didn't do in the initial study is take any credits for the flows that existed prior, which would have been Elena's Restaurant, Uptown Grill, and any minor flow in the warehouse building. So we added a restaurant in, but we didn't take the restaurant out. So, you know, these numbers are conservatively high. We ran them through in the report, through all the cities, as far as the gravity sewer, the pump station, Forest Main, interceptor line, dual siphon to the treatment plant and the treatment plant, and everything barely goes on the radar screen. But I can answer any questions about that, and...
And we have received documentation from those agencies, water and sewer, of that?
Yes.
Okay.
The other one thing I would also add, which is in the narrative of my July report, is the city had set aside for the AVR Hudson Landing Project 530,000, I think, gallons a day. So that number was taken off the excess capacity, so it was really... Now, with that project going to public park, your excess capacity in the sewer system goes up by another 530,000 gallons a day. That... And I mentioned that in a report, but at that time, I wrote the report in July, that transaction was pending. I guess it is now going forward, for sure. So with that, that project disappearing will free up more capacity for the city's systems, and particularly the wastewater plant, so...
I think one thing Dennis pointed out, but just to make clear, the DEC numbers don't take into consideration the efficient toilets, showers, sinks that we're going to be using in this building. And we care about the environment, and we're going to be using green technologies, which is basically water savers on showerheads and on faucets and on the toilets. So the flow is going to be a lot lower than what the DEC tells you to use as a standing number.
The other thing, Judy Hanson had done a study of... This goes back to the AVR project, but of your apartment buildings in the city, the bigger ones like Stony Run and the condo townhouse-type Country Village, Stuyvesant Charter, all those, and Twin Ponds. And the average flow per bedroom was about 45 gallons per day. And that, you know, that was without the new fixtures that use a lot less and the new washing machines that use a lot less. We're projecting 110 gallons a day per bedroom, so that's more than double what you're actually going to see. The other impacts of these changes are, you know, really the visual here, and the footprint of everything does not change at all. The building coverage on the land, the amount of impervious surface, stormwater, all those are unchanged as a result of the addition of the 14 affordable units. So I think you're looking at the traffic, which was covered by Creighton-Manning, and that increase in water and sewer and the visual has a slight difference from the Schwenck Drive perspective, Kingston Plaza perspective.
Sue, has the... Going back to the traffic, has that amended traffic study been submitted to our independent traffic analysis company?
Yes.
Okay. Have we gotten results from them? Do they compare?
They are... They had... That's the report I gave you.
All right.
Mike, you want to speak next?
If we're done with traffic by any chance, then Frank can...
Well, I got a few more questions before we hop into the part two, okay?
Yeah, there'll be traffic questions as part of that form.
We'll do the traffic part in part two first, so you can... As far as the decision to add these additional affordable housing units, how did the applicant... How did you arrive, even though it's not required... It's not a requirement under zoning. This is something that you've taken upon yourself to do. How did you arrive at that, to amend this application?
You mean the number of units, or just the decision to do in general?
What was your... The decision to move forward with affordable housing?
So affordable housing, we know is a very important issue here in the City of Kingston. When we were originally asked to look at this project and come up with a solution to all of the requirements and challenges that were in the original RFQ, affordable housing, while important, wasn't as important as it is now. We felt like we came up with a really compelling project for what we were asked to do. And we were asked to look at parking. We were asked to look at creating new public spaces, walkability, sustainability, uptown revitalization with both consumers, businesses, job creation. And we did all of that in the project. The economics of the parking structure, however, are really, really difficult to try to pull off, and the parking garage, as we've talked about in the past, will always... It's not a seeker concern necessarily, but just the... You want to know how we got there. The parking garage will always lose money. The cost of operating the parking garage annually is barely covered by the revenue from the parking garage, but that doesn't take into consideration the million dollars a year that we have to spend in financing the construction cost of the parking garage. So the math on the parking garage works out where we basically spend a million a year to build and pay for the construction of it, spend another $300,000 a year to operate it, and collect roughly $300,000 a year in revenue. So the parking garage will lose money. How do we make up for that? With the rent from the non-affordable units on top of the building. The issue with mixing affordable units at a 10% or 20% or some number less than 80% into the project is that there's no grant program that exists with tax credits to pay for those affordable units. So basically, if we were to have a building that was 80% affordable... There's lots of grant programs. Well, there's two that are very popular, that would have subsidized the cost of building those. We looked, and we searched, and we tried to find other ways to do it while we were going through this process, and as we finally got the architecture to the point where we thought, okay, we're there, we kind of came to the epiphany that, look, affordable housing is really, really important. Let's find a way to do this. And one way we figured to do it, which softened the blow on the economics of the project, was to increase density. So instead of taking away 14 units that were helping to subsidize that parking garage and helping to pay for the bottom line, let's add units. Instead of taking away revenue, let's add units. Now, make no mistake, those 14 affordable units do not pay for themselves. There is a negative overall cost to the project that the developer... development team is bearing. So we are going to, you know, basically reach into our pocket to subsidize this cost because we felt the issue was that important. And we could do it in a way that doesn't take away from the architecture of the building, that adds the height only in an area that's least impacted, and we thought it was a great compromise. So even though it's not required, it is part of the vision of the city, and we felt as this important project, we want to be part of that vision going forward. So that's how we did it.
And to comment on your presentation up here about the affordable housing aspect of it, you've... I commend you for peppering the affordable housing units throughout the project instead of segregating to a certain area of the project itself. Is it all going to be on the upper floor? Is it... How do you spread those out?
Every floor of each building will have affordable units.
Okay.
So they're... Like I said, when you build a multi-story building, you vertically stack the same unit type, and that's to make the plumbing work. If you put a one-bedroom over a two-bedroom, you can imagine ending up with a bathroom over a dining room, and that just doesn't work for the flow of water.
Okay.
It does. So you have all the studio units that are stacked. You have stacks of one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and three-bedrooms throughout the building. So the... You'll end up with the affordable units all over the place.
Good.
And the construction type, you will know no different between a unit that's affordable and one that's not. It's just a lower rent, but it would be the same kitchen, countertop, bathroom, door, everything. No one will know the difference.
And with the elevations on the new plan, I don't know if you have any of the previous proposal with you tonight, so we can have a side... I mean, if you don't, that's fine. Do you have a look before as opposed to now? Can we have a look at that as well?
We have them, I think, right here. There you go. This is Brad Jordan speaking, by the way.
The concept of raising the back of the building to add those units actually came during a public comment period for this... Under this body's meeting.
So the one on the right is the new one. That's the current proposal, right?
Yes. You can see the couple changes that we did between the new one and the old one. One of the changes was out of comment, but not related to the adding the units. I don't have a free... That's okay. Adding this material and changing the cornice and stepping the building back from here, that was a comment we received at the last meeting. And then adding this additional floor, only in this section is the other change. So this was responding to an architectural comment, and this was... So this was responding to an architectural comment, and this was responding to a community need. And I just want to be clear, this is something the paper quote wrong. These are not the affordable units. The affordable units are all over. This is just adding density to allow us to add in the affordable units.
Okay. The comment tonight from Ms. Wink about how this is going to affect the parking aspect of it, the parking garage, any, any impact with that? Do you?
Well, we are not reserving any more spaces for units themselves. In other words, the 129 spaces that were going to be numbered will still become 129 numbered. We foresee this building, as we've talked about before, as a model for sustainability because of its walkability. So we we can see the need for people moving into this building to not have as many cars as they would if they lived somewhere else. Because you have direct access to almost everything you need, between grocery store, doctors, pharmacy, eating establishments, you have your recreational within the building and in uptown Kingston. Bus service, exactly. You can get anywhere you want to go and anything you need without getting in a car. So I think that by design, our residents are not going to need as many cars as they would if they lived in a different building in Kingston. And so while adding units could use up some of that additional public parking, it won't be reserved. And the way we see the parking turning over, people that are coming here during the day will be presumably taking up the spaces from the residents that left during the day if they so choose to rent a space just like anybody else. And when that resident returns at night, maybe that's a different spaces available and they go park there. We can't, we can't build enough parking for every resident to have every space they want, plus anyone in Kingston who shows up to have their own dedicated space as well. The parking spaces have to be turned over and used by multiple people throughout the day, and that would mean a successful development with with lots of people coming and going.
Any other questions?
And I do have the unit count if you wanted. I looked it up. It was nine, studio 65, one, 62, and 10, three.
One more.
65, one, 62, and 10, three.
Any other questions before we move into the part two of the EAF?
I just had a question, and I know I've asked this before, and I'm just having a hard, hard time, and it goes to traffic. Looking at the picture, if you're heading up Fair Street Extension, it looks like a regular street. Is there anything that we can?
You have to speak.
When you go up Fair Street, there, I mean, that looks like a regular street. So for people that are not local, if they make that turn and go up the street, is there like, is there a cul-de-sac on the end?
Yeah, there's a way to turn around underneath there without having to go through the pay toll to get into the.
So when they get to the top of that hill, they see a pay toll in front of.
When they get to the top, they're going to see a way to turn around and come back out. If they want to get into the garage, they make a right or a left.
So the pay toll is on the left or the right?
Correct.
Okay.
So they can just basically U-turn and come back out. But signage will be important and wayfinding, so we need to make sure that people understand that this is the entrance to the Kingstonian parking garage, not Fair Street. That signage hasn't been worked out yet, you know, but the the concept is part of the site plan, we'll come back with the exact signage rather than just this. That would show how we would make sure people know where they're about to turn into. Great point.
Mr. Chairman, what what I was going to say before goes to the project changes under Seeker. And the fact is that projects change all the time during the pendency of review. They they go through a lot of changes. The part one of the EAF is a document that's prepared by the applicant. It's the applicant's document that's submitted to the board. Those changes happen with lessening impacts or greater impacts during the pendency of the review as a matter of course. What's important is that during the part two, and whatever the determination of significance is, part three, whether it be an EIS or whether the part three be an EGDEC, that those changes are examined. That's what the courts have ruled is the important analysis, not some kind of mechanism for going back and amending a part one EAF that's the applicant's document. It's not even the planning board's document. So as long as those changes are examined, that's what the important or salient point is under Seeker.
I agree with you on that. I don't think that the whole document has to be renewed or modified, but we can look to the changes that were made in the project and go from there.
And again, it's not me saying this, this is the the courts in New York, and it's the regulations themselves and the the even the legislative enactment for Seeker. I also, just before we go to the part two, I do have a submittal for the board, not to read any of it tonight. It's, it does address your zoning law has a required address of site plan and special use permit impacts or potential impacts that meld themselves with the Seeker issues. So as I've done customarily for other projects, we have an analysis of the site plan and the special use permit criteria, which I'm going to leave copies with for you. How many, Sue, how many do you want? I got eight or nine you want or something for the board?
I can simply copy and send them out digitally, so.
Well, I got, I can leave you.
As a PDF.
I can leave you like.
Oh, yeah, I'll take a copy myself.
So.
And all of these documents will be available to the public, I can assure you. You don't want to go over this right now, you just wanted for us to.
No, that's for you to to read. They really go to the site plan and special use permit issues.
Anybody have any other questions?
Sitting here, I just wanted to make one other comment regarding the parking and may relate to traffic as well. Our our target market for this building is in large part seniors. So seniors often drive less and use, need less vehicles. Some of them don't have a vehicle at all. And I, we feel really good about what we're doing in terms of the increase in parking. You know, some people have tried to say, oh, if you add up all of these uses and everyone used everything at the exact same moment, how much parking have you really increased? And and the answer is a lot. We still have. And it's not possible that every tenant will be home at the same time during the day when people are still trying to park. And even at that, we've still added over 100 spaces. So I feel really, really good about the increased amount of parking in this building.
And and as folks come in and out of, you know, tenants come and go, some have cars, some don't, is it safe to say that this is almost like a living and breathing animal that, you know, you've dedicated a certain amount of spots for King, for for public parking and X amount of spots for people who reside there? The amount of public parking can increase at times, right? Is that something?
If it needs to.
As you do analysis on.
Yep.
You know, you want to maximize the amount of parking in there. So has that something, is that safe to assume?
Absolutely. If it turns out that the spaces that we've reserved are sitting empty.
Yeah.
And the public parking is at capacity, of course, we would.
Okay.
Paint over the numbers and and open more up. It would only make good sense to to do that. It's, it's going to be a living, breathing building. Certain things we're committing to, again, not a seeker issue, but the parking rates, we're going to be commiserate with the rates that are in the city of Kingston.
Okay.
We have to stay at the market. We can't charge more. It wouldn't, we'd have an empty garage, and that wouldn't make sense. So.
And these are, these will be ongoing negotiations with the city as far as what rates will be charged, right?
Right. We basically have to match the city's rates. So.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, I just wanted to add one thing. Joe got me thinking about something that we looked at and we witnessed when we were out doing our traffic counts, but given the grid nature of of the area, the idea of finding a parking space on the street can be attractive for someone. And when they're not available, you tend to circle the block, hoping to.
I've done that.
Everybody's done it and do it every day. So when I looked at this project originally, I saw it as a way with the increase in parking to be a place where someone knows they can find a space. And we didn't quantify it because it's very hard to quantify, but it might reduce the redundant movements that occur in the grid when people are looking for parking and can't find it.
Can that be accomplished through wayfinding signs throughout, you know, spread throughout the district when, you know, somebody's in the periphery looking for a spot? Hey, I don't know how you do it, but is it?
One of the best ways we're going to do it is by getting the local business owners and employees to know that they can park here. And one thing I noticed, and I'm not from Kingston, but when I come here from Poughkeepsie and I do the same thing, I try to find a spot, I oftentimes see people who are employees in these stores and restaurants come outside, feed the meter, and go back inside and go back to work. Well, they're taking away a spot that a customer could park in. So if if all of those or a significant number of those employees and business owners parked in this garage on the periphery of the city, then all of that more, I want to say more valuable, but more central parking to their business would be freed up. So the wayfinding will naturally happen. Looking for this store, there's a spot open, great, because the shop steward person is now parked in this garage that's on the edge of the city instead. So I think we can do both, you know, a little education, this project's going to be big, and when it's built, everyone's going to know about it. And, you know, it'll be an easy place. It'll have modern technology. You'll have an app where you'll be able to pay for your parking and, or a monthly permit if you work every day. So I think we have.
Not the whoosh, yeah, whoosh.
Yeah. So it, there's a lot of improvements that this is going to bring.
Good. Thank you, Frank, on that, too. Any other questions or comments before we move on? Okay. You want to move on to the part two now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We're going to move on to the EAF part two. We're going to go line by line. And I know that some, the board members may have some questions about the boxes that were that were checked. I know Sue has some, and I see a bunch of sticky notes. Do you just, you want to just go ahead and hand it over to you to?
Sure.
Because I don't feel like.
So.
I'm sorry, what?
Well, we're, we're going to go, we're going to start with the impact on land.
Well, the applicants have asked that we, can we start with the traffic?
Don't, don't do that if if it takes it out of normal protocol, I'm fine. Don't have any time constraints.
Okay. All right.
Do what you need to do.
I'd rather go through it in order. It just helps with more sense. So the first one on page one, impact on land, I had gone through all of the questions. The only one that I had a question with was number or letter H. And I felt that while it was marked no or small impact, I think that that should be a moderate to large impact, and that was construction, grading, and demolition. So I was going to change that one, and I had gone through that. Any questions?
I mean, that that sounds reasonable because of the the size of the buildings that that will be taken down, and is that a fair assessment? Okay.
Board members?
Building will come down in a matter of a few days.
Does everybody concur with that, that we change that to moderate to large impact? Do we, we consider that?
As long as we're on the moderate side.
So what you're concerned is that it's part of the construction portion?
Bring that up closer, Mary Jo.
It covers the entire project, yes.
So you, you think that the construction, grading, and demolition is?
Is a moderate to large impact versus a small.
I'm good with that. Do we need to have a consensus on each one?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that you read through each, each category and each.
Line by line?
Line by line?
And answer, and answer each question.
Oh, I know Sue has done that before, so that's good.
I know it's a pain in the neck, but that's.
Okay.
What we should do.
Okay. So under impact on land, the first question is the proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet. That was marked no or small impact.
Everybody's good with that?
Agreed.
Okay.
The next question was the proposed action may involve construction on slopes of 15% or greater. That was marked moderate to large, which I would agree with.
I agree. We agree.
The next one is the proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface. That was marked no or small to moderate impact. I agree with that.
I, we, I agree.
Next one, the proposed action may involve the excavation or removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. That was a no or small impact.
Agree. Yes.
You have to chime in here.
Yeah.
The next one was the proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases, and they marked that moderate to large impact.
I agree.
I agreed.
I agree.
The next is the proposed action may result in increase erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment of herbicides. Small to moderate.
We agree.
Agree. The next one was the proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area. Small to moderate.
No, no or small, right?
Right.
That was marked no, yes, we agree, I agree.
And the last one was when I just discussed any other impacts, construction, grading, and demolition. It had initially been noted as a no or small. I marked it as a moderate to large potential impact.
What are we looking at as far as, like, are we looking at what's going to be demolished or the time period of demolition? Because I agree, it's going to go quick to demolish the building. I don't know what they, what, what aspect we're looking at as far as demolition and grading.
I was a little confused about that.
Part, part of Seeker is you do, you base part two on the questions that were, the information that was provided under part one and what information has been provided to you as the board. Part two is you go through this checklist. And then the board will have to complete part three, which will address all of the moderate to large impacts. So in the part three, which will ultimately be written, will address those impacts. Does that help?
Not really. Yeah, what the, what the construction, grading, and demolition, what aspect of the project? Is it the how much they're demolishing or the time period of demolition?
It would be the time period demolition, how much their demolition, what kind of grading they're doing, what kind of footings they're putting in.
Okay.
Where they're putting the footings in and how it affects the grade.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we agree to change that? So the next question is, the impact on geological features. It was marked no. I concur with that. It says, the proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. Then they have, for example, cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, caves, et cetera.
I agree. There's no impact there.
Okay. So then we're going to move on to impacts on surface water. And then there were, they marked it yes, so let's go through those. A, the proposed action may create a new water body. No, I agree.
I agree.
Agree.
The proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of over 10% or more than 10-acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any body of water.
No or small impact, I agree.
Right.
Agree.
Okay. The next, the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in bed or banks of any other water body. They have no or small, and I would agree with that.
I agree.
I agree, and that's letter D. You'll have to read letter C.
Yeah, go to C. It's okay.
The proposed action may involve dredging more than 100 cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body.
No.
Agree with no or small impact.
Okay, moving on to E. The proposed action may create turbidity in a water body either from upland erosion, runoff, or by disturbing bottom sediments.
No or small impact, I agree.
Agree.
The proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from a surface body.
No or small impact, I agree.
The proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater or surface water.
Agree with no or small impact.
Okay. The next one was, the proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to sitation or the degradation of receiving water bodies. That one they had marked no or small impact, I thought it should be moderate to large with the potential.
Now, what receiving water body would we look at here? Would that be the Asopus Creek? Is that what they...
Yes.
We would take exception to moderate large there based on the stormwater report and the, obviously, there'll be a SWIP associated with the site plan approval and construction. But, and we're treating the stormwater off the site, which currently runs off unabated and untreated. We think it's small, but...
So is any stormwater, Dennis, leaving this site?
Yes. Well, the stormwater is leaving the site currently and will leave the site afterwards. What the difference is, is we're going to be treating the stormwater from the site, which currently isn't happening, and we're also going to be adding about 10% impervious surface into the site plan. And currently, the site's about 1% at most impervious, I should say pervious. We're increasing it from 1% to about 10% by the use of some green practices, both in the pedestrian plaza and in the areas surrounding where Elena's is now and also on the activities deck. So we're adding rain gardens on the activity deck. So we think, we think we're improving the situation. We think that's demonstrated in the stormwater report that was submitted. So we would...
And when that treated stormwater leaves the subject premise...
Go to Storm Service on Schwenck Drive, which discharges to a dual 60-inch pipe system that runs out by the Rondau Savings Bank branch and across the back of Dutch Village to the Asopus Creek.
And that's already an existing concrete...
Yes.
...exit into the Asopus based on the water...
So we're decreasing the peak rates of runoff. We're treating all the runoff from the site through swirl concentrators, and obviously during construction, if that's your concern, there'll be significant sediment erosion control practices in place during the construction activity before the site is restabilized, so...
So I guess my question, Sue, is where is the soil erosion taking place for a moderate to large impact?
Well, it would be, you know, once you demolish the building, you have all materials and all that. So what I would say then is to attach to this document a copy of their soil and erosion and their water, stormwater study as an appendix to this.
And we can, and when we do that, we can concur with the no or small impact? Is that, can we do that?
Yes.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to concur with the applicant checking the box for no or small impact. Okay? All right. Thank you.
And just along to follow with what Dennis said, right now, it's a surface parking lot, and one of the major sources of pollution are cars dripping oil. When it rains, that just runs straight off the site and into the waterways. These cars are going to be parking indoors in a garage that we're going to clean with sweeper machines, and the runoff from the site's largely going to be roof rain. So then we're going to treat it and then release it. So we're significantly improving the stormwater condition after this project than exists right now.
Okay. So moving on, letter I, the proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action. They wrote, they marked no or small impact. I concur with that.
I'm good with that, too.
Agree.
Agree.
J, the proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water body. No or small impact.
I agree.
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 Okay. The proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities. No.
No.
Agree.
Agree.
There were no other impacts that I had noted, so unless anyone on the board has anything.
I'm good.
Okay. So now we're going to the impact on groundwater. And the questions are, the proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or may have potential to introduce contamination to groundwater or an aquifer. They marked no. I concur with that. Municipal water bodies are going to be servicing the project.
I agree.
Agree.
Okay. So we move down to the impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in the development of land subject to flooding. They marked yes. Well, let's go through those questions. The proposed action may result in development in a designated floodway. They marked no or small impact.
I concur.
I concurred. Okay.
This is not a flood zone?
No.
Not a floodway.
Not a floodway.
A small portion of property is in the flood zone.
The proposed action may result in development within 100-year floodplain. They marked no or small, and I would, I concur with that.
Agree.
Agree.
Okay. The next one was, the proposed action may result in development within a 500-year floodplain.